Jenny, Jenny, should I just turn it so she can see the screen or what should I do?
Sure. Hey Jenny.
Hi guys.
We joined you on my computer because Stan is doing the Zoom for the Piper Jaffrey guy that's gonna join later. So I'm just gonna face you towards the big screen. I don't know if you can see.
Yeah.
That is working.
Absolutely. I'm not really working right now.
There's three of us here. Is Greg's coming?
From what I know, yeah. Matt's not on yet, but.
Yeah.
Of course he already is, but. Excuse me, or quite.
Hi Kelly. Great.
You've had some birthdays at your house recently?
Yep. Parties go over. Play all time quarterback for a couple of them.
Can be on the, only can be on the winning side that way. Hey Matt, how are you?
Good, thanks.
I'm gonna mute it and then when we get to that point, I'll bring you up. Is that okay? Perfect.
Yep, that's.
Like I said, we lost some stuff at the beginning, so thank you.
Traffical skills are.
That's, did you hear? That's why she's doing the Google Meet with Jennifer just.
I give about two screens going, that's about.
Well, it'd be one thing if that was separate and I could move them over there, but I kinda run.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll do the.
Public hearing first, okay? We'll go ahead and call the public meeting to order?
Sure. I can't see otherwise, it doesn't matter.
Is anyone here to speak at the public meeting?
Any public?
For the certified budget.
For the budget. Is anyone here to speak on the budget?
Thirty million to me.
Yeah, I gotta speak a lot on that.
Graduating seniors, I think she'd get like a stipend.
We'll go ahead and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Jenny? Could you second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is adjourned. We will then switch over to our regular meeting. We'll call that regular meeting to order and I will ask for looking at our approval items. Our agenda first of all. And I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is passed. Next, we will go ahead with this five school board basics.
I'll just read them all.
Okay. Put students first, follow the law and your own policy, respect the chain of command, base decisions on shared objective information and operate in the public eye. Okay, next we have our public forum. I don't have any sheets filled out. So we will go ahead to our consent items. And looking through those, Kendra did give another set of, or some more bills that came in. Was there anything you wanted on that?
They were mostly regular. We are purchasing a mower from C and D.
Okay.
And starting some, Hibbing Lawn Care is gonna start some project under the football bleachers. So that's to start that out. Okay?
Yeah, that'll be to do a little bit of the prep work under the bleachers and alongside it before we resurface the track so that it doesn't wash out under the track. That's happened last.
Some rocks always end up out there.
So they're gonna dig some of that out and then put a little bit of tiling in there to get that away and do it in the grand scope of things at minimal cost, so.
All right. If there's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, those are approved. We'll next go to our administrative reports with our principals. Mr. DeZao?
Yeah, so at the elementary school, we are kinda busy in our assessment season. We wrapped up our ISASPs. Very thankful, the week of April 7th, very thankful to the staff and also the students. Very proud and, proud of the effort that was given there. We got all of our tests completed in three days. Felt like in, in three days, it sounds like a short amount of time, but doesn't feel like we rushed through them. We took a test per day. Some of those kinda things. We had to make up one extra test, but all of the kids were there. They were engaged, they really tried their best. We have some preliminary reports or data coming back in terms of proficiency scores and some of those things. So as we get more of that data, we'll, we'll continue to dive into it and make tweaks and adjustments as we go to best serve our students and staff. So also the ALPA assessment was conducted, Ms. Reader, with the help of Ms. Williamson. At the elementary school, really worked hard on proctoring and giving that assessment, which shows our language growth for our students who are non-native English speakers and trying to get them to understand the language so that they're able to better understand the learning that we're implementing and the instruction that we're giving in our classrooms. So yeah, and then we're getting ready for our spring assessments in terms of fast reading and I-ready math, grade level assessments, those kinda things, secondary state reporting. So good stuff, but it does feel a lot like, a lot of assessments all of a sudden. And so, but that's kinda how we're wrapping up our year. So getting ready for some field trips. They're listed in my report, you can read through those. I welcome any questions or anything like that if you need to. But, and then obviously, a lot of my time has been working through staffing and making sure we've got the correct team in place to best serve Sibley, Cheaton and especially the elementary building here as we move forward. And so it's taken quite a bit of time, but feel good about where we're at and where we're heading. So just very grateful for those who have been a part of all of those teams to give their input and make those decisions just a little bit easier. So really, really appreciative of those. So we've got a lot of stuff going on in terms of conversations about scheduling, transitions, the big summer project that's happening at the elementary building, trying to make appropriate plans to get that started on time and then completed on time. So just a lot of planning and preparations as we go. So yeah, that's my report. You can see the staff attendance and the PD attendance that hasn't been reported yet is also included in there. So yeah, a lot going on, not a lot going on, but a lot going on all at the same time. So. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. DeZao.
Thank you.
Mr. Hertz?
Yeah, so similar things to the elementary, kinda first big checkpoint in the spring, the master schedule is pretty much done for the fall for high school. So a big thank you to Mrs. Ruggles and Jennifer Bruxford in Twila Heathshire. They do a lot in getting students scheduled and building the courses within JMC. And those, that makes it easier for me to take those next steps. So a big thank you to them for their work. And then Mrs. Schuler, her work getting the middle school master done. There's a lot of complexity because of the sharing of staff and just changing in staff and she did a great job getting that all figured out. So we hope, we hope it's all figured out. ISAS testing, middle school is pretty much complete, just a couple of kids to finish up. High school, we started on Tuesday, we're scheduled to be done April 29th and so far, that's going well. We did a kickoff during success for A and B. Just kinda talking about the importance of taking ISASPs seriously and you know, what that means for students and, and the school district and the community in general. So for community outreach, today we had our spring cleanup. We didn't have as good a turnout as we were hoping for. We were down a little bit compared to last year, just in participants. I think we had about 60. So still good. We were able to do a lot around the school community, but also the city parks. A crew went over to O'Cheaton to prepare the softball diamond and get that cleaned up as well. So still accomplished a lot, but looking to get to that hundred participant number. That's what, what we're shooting for. So overall, good day. We got a lot accomplished. So grateful for our volunteers and students that participated in that. The career fair was this past week, Thursday. We had about 25 local businesses represented at the career fair. That's a big undertaking, lots of coordination, so lots of people to thank. Ashley Ackerman from the chamber helping to coordinate the businesses and Andre Abdi from the county helping to outreach and with organization. And then again, Mrs. Ruggles helping with the planning and logistics here. So that day sophomores do business tours. So we had multiple businesses offer to host us, you know, for tours. And then we come back for a panel of speakers. We had five speakers present to sophomores and then all students participate in the career fair at the end of the day. So really great opportunity to see what our community has to offer for careers and also great just community and, and school interactions. Great day. PD wise, we continue to focus on our individual professional development plan goals, hoping to have our one-on, my one-on-one check-ins with staff. And then need to get started on final evaluation meetings with staff here towards the end of the year. Anybody who's going through the observation cycle has to have a final eval with me too, so. And then de-cap, really good news to report there. I, I reported a few months ago kinda what the de-cap was, what things we were looking at. And we put a lot of work into improving that. So last year, we had a 13 out of 36. This year, we scored a 30 out of 36. So we made a huge improvement there and that's due to just, I think, a lot of work and time put into it. So lots of people to thank there. Jordan Manning, Katie Schroder, Katie Colling, Teresa Ruggles, Matt Ramirez, Maria Mans, Amber Brinkhaus, Harley Klein-Hesselink, Mike Wedge, Aaron Hench, Des Cop, Mike McCarty, Kaitlyn Espy, Tristan Braemer, Michaela Friedel and Emily Hoagland. So most of that is staff, but also some other contributors. So those are all the people who actually contributed to the de-cap plan itself. Yeah, so a lot went into it, but we did much better. We had the highest score in our region. That was good news. We're a little surprised by that. We didn't expect to do that good, but we're happy about it. Then at the bottom, attendance and PD attendance.
And I will add, I didn't realize that the score, that's awesome. It's not yet, but I, I think down the road, whether it's this fall or two from now, I think they're gonna start using that de-cap score as part of the high school performance profile. They, they indicate movement toward there because they want more experiences that go into your de-cap. So I think they're leading to that, which would be good for us in terms of that score.
Right.
They haven't said that, but all signs point to that.
Yeah, a lot of the pieces that they require are already being folded into the performance profile, like the industry-recognized credentials, your post-secondary enrollment and performance and then your, your work-based learning. We have school to career, but the state calls it work-based learning experiences. Those are all part of what they look for on the performance profile already, so.
Very good. Good work on that. It's a big mountain to climb sometimes.
It was a big project.
Yeah. Stan?
So for my report in the three areas here, the district literacy and math scores, just in regards to that, resignations and staffing decisions in regards to that and finding people to fill that and how that schedule can go. And that's been a lot of work by what Casey and Julie have already alluded to this evening, but figuring that out. Looking at our math curriculum, and I put this on here initially, that we were potentially gonna delay that a year. And I think I had mentioned that before, but looking to delay the whole cycle a year. What we're looking at doing now potentially is we might buy the math curriculum, correct me if I say this wrong, but looking at potentially at getting this spring/summer for next year, the 7-12, no, high school curriculum.
Yeah, we're not exactly sure, but either 7-12 or 9-12 and looking at what would fit best for us.
Right, just because of where they're at in the process and some of the things, but more than likely for sure, K-6 or K-8 delaying that until the following year, that we'd continue to evaluate it next year and then purchase it for the year after. Does that make sense? But not for this coming year. Part of the reasoning for that is if you've been following legislation, just taking more time to look at it. But they're making a big push on really doing for math what already has been done for literacy in terms of tracking. And if you're behind, how do you progress monitor and bring them up? And so giving, but they haven't come up with a list that's necessarily state-approved with that. They have recommendations. So how do we pick a curriculum that we know will fit those requirements and looking into the specifics of that? That'd be a simple way to summarize that. So just taking the time to do that. So it might be split over two years, but in terms of what we have on our curriculum schedule next year, any, any way I think we can fit that without having to delay anyone. And I don't think we have to push the whole cycle back if we split math in two years and we can still move forward. So just talking through that and, and doing that as well and just looking at where we're at with our testing data and continuing with plans for the team for the PD schedule for next year, maybe not as far along as that is we normally would be, but I don't think that's a bad thing with some of the discussions that we're having and plans and the changes with what we're having next year, just to, to keep that out there. So it, it will happen. Staff retention engagement, some of this is what we've already discussed, but discussing the cost-saving measures and outside teaching positions and continuing those from last month. I do hope that when we get to the end of this year or next fall, that this year maybe we'll be better than we initially projected. So that's a positive. And then just how we're gonna continue to fill these open positions and timing it right through retirements and resignations, which, you know, I said, the bloodless attrition and, and keeping us in a position where we can do that and don't have to make some rash decisions. And then for the retention engagement, that ties in with the financially viable, but we've been working through our Save Pebble projections a lot. Maybe not in the last week or two, but we've done a lot of work towards looking at that with what we're gonna talk about later with our bond and the building projects and seeing where we're at. I can't stress enough, all things bonds. Today was a big day and we'll talk about that a little bit moving forward here about the bonds and what we're gonna use from that. In regards to financing the building project, right now, we're looking and visiting with Amos and where we're at financially. I don't think we're gonna make a, a decision on the bus route for this year, but we're gonna start on that earlier next year for the following year. So we're looking at right now, having that to stay even to start the, start the year next year. That is our plan at this point. Spent a lot of work with Kendra finalizing our budget projections and other amendments for this year potentially, which we'll talk about later in this meeting. And the other stuff already mentioned. And I did add on here, our audit was given an extension, nothing that we did, they just didn't have that done. So then we have to file for an extension and it was granted. So that's the attachment there. More just as an FYI.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move ahead to board committees.
Yeah, policy, we met and we're gonna approve that. Do you have anything to add to that, Laurel?
Just minor.
Yeah, overall minor and then one, one kind of policy specific that I'll go over with a, with a change. For our school specific, but the rest were legal recommendations. Finance committee, we have been meeting to finalize negotiations and take care of that stuff. Before I forget, then Jamie and Greg, when we're done this evening, if the two of you could stick around, because we got a scheduled meeting before our next board meeting to go over a few things. So I'm saying that now so that we don't forget.
Remember you sent out an email.
Yeah, so, and I figured we could talk about that after the meeting tonight, but, but really, they've met a few times to finalize negotiations and some other things and we just gotta finish those discussions. So thanks. And then we haven't met at his facility, so that's really the summary.
Any questions on any of that? Okay, we'll move on to recognition and excellence.
Hey guys.
Okay.
So for the FFA, we did a bunch of awards at state. So our Iowa degree recipients were Ben Byers, Tyler Marco, Jackson Pedley and Sienna Van Houten. Our chapter also received a gold on our national chapter award and received a bronze ambassador award. I just wanna add too, getting a gold on our national chapter award is such a big thing. And then we also weren't just one of the golds that got a walk-through, we were one that got a stand on stage. That means we're in like the top 20, which is very impressive this year. And then Marshall Skipoff and Claire Reiman earned a gold rating on their chapter display CDE, which again is that gold that they got in the top four. And then I personally placed in the top 18% of the farm business management test. And then our jazz choir has an SO night sound. The night sounds has a fantastic season of growth and achievement. They got third place at Shake the Lakes, which is a jazz choir competition. They're in the 2A class, improved from fifth place last year. First place at the University of South Dakota Jazz Festival, 1A class, USC uses a different classification system. And they improved from second place last year. And they got sixth place at the vocal jazz championships. And then this year, jazz choir achieved sixth place in the class 2A division at the Iowa Vocal Jazz Championships. While this was a step down from last year's second place finish, it is important to recognize the high level of competition and the dedication our students showed. Incredibly proud of them. We're especially proud of our soloists. At Shake the Lakes, only two students were chosen as outstanding soloists from all 2A ensembles and one of them was our very own, Gabe Vandyhoof. And then at the Iowa Vocal Jazz Choir one, Emma Holmbeck was named one of only two outstanding soloists from all 2A class groups. And then many students from a high school choir had shared that after this year's jazz choir season, they're planning to audition for next year's SO jazz choir, which is just a testament to the positive impact and experience it has on our school community. And then our 2025 IH SMA state slash solo and small ensemble contest, our jazz choir night sounds, it's the same thing. Did it just repeat twice on here?
Yeah, I think it did accidentally, so.
My bad guys. And then generals of the week in March, for the week of the 7th, we had elementary Joey Tenaple, middle school Jose Perez Hernandez, and then high school Tristan Jananga. And then our staff was April Durans. In the week of the 14th, elementary was Sophia Gonzalez, middle school Addison Dodin, high school Dylan Martinez. And then staff was Megan Nag. And then in the week of the 21st, we had Kyler Julius in the elementary. Middle school was Pedro Martinez, high school Kyler Schaefer, and our staff was Vera Poland. And then for the week of the 28th, we had Hector Ramos for elementary. Middle school was Salvador Zapata. High school was Victoria Gomez Mitchell and our staff member was Twila. And that's all I have for you guys for this part.
Thank you, Reagan. Okay, we'll move on to our discussion items with our literacy goals, fine arts.
So Mr. Jacobson is gonna present and he's the, the head of our finance department.
Thank you for having me tonight. Tell Mr. DeZao to try to keep it under 90 minutes. So we've had a good year at fine arts. You can see our staff up there. I did not put completely correctly, you can click it is also elementary and middle school part-time. Also have a couple of other people that are doing some middle school PE as well. So that's a slight addition to that. You can see those people, they work hard a lot of times. I always laugh because we'll be leaving, it'll be well after hours and those are the cars that are still in the parking lot. So it's kinda fun to see them wave to each other sometimes from the window. But anyway, great group of people to work with. Mrs. Madsen is, is moving on to a different opportunity. So we will thank her for everything she's done. She's been a great asset to our group. So we will miss her. Some success stories there, I just kinda put those down. I know you can read them, I'm just gonna highlight a few of them. Obviously, what honor choirs, honor bands have been well represented this year. PE has finished up pickleball recently. They've been doing a lot of units that are life skill type activities and they have been enjoying that a lot. You can see a lot of kids out playing pickleball at night if you drive by the park too. So that's kind of a good, good sign, I think. Also, all PE kids in high school have been completing the mile walk or run on Fridays. So that's good. Art program is setting up for fine arts show tomorrow. We are bringing that back. That's kind of in there later too, but it's kind of a fun thing. We've kind of worked together with all of the fine arts people, speech debate, our speech and drama and also with Mrs. Espy and getting everything lined up that way. So it's been fun getting that ready to go. We should have a, a longer program tomorrow night. We are not doing our forward recital that we did at the Lantern this year, so we're doing this fine arts night. If you remember from fine arts night from years past, a number of years, we, we used to do this already. And so we're gonna bring that back this year, trying to make that something normal again. We've done it all the way through until COVID hit and then we stopped doing it because of that. So it's been a number of years since we've done it and so this will be hopefully a welcomed addition. We'll have, Bambus should be serving some refreshments as well too. So you're welcome to come out tomorrow night from about 5:55 until 8:40. There'll be performances going on throughout the night. So come and go and enjoy some good music and drama. Let's see. The, I was gonna hopefully share the best communities award, but we didn't get that yet. They've moved the date back a little bit on the announcement of that. So it's supposed to be the end of April now. So I had that in there, is hopefully having that today because the, in the past, it's always been this, this day we could announce it. So hopefully we have that again and we'll send out emails about that. Again, vocal jazz, kinda highlighted that earlier. We had a lot of kids perform at the nursing homes for Christmas and the people really enjoy that. Kids really enjoy that too. We've had a lot of fun doing that. It's been a good thing to work towards and an excellent thing. They presented a musical this year. Small ensemble contest went very well for both high school and middle school. For high school, none of our groups received anything less than a two rating, which is great out of five. It was our goal for, my goal I should say, for high school band to do all students involved in something that were eligible to do it. And we had that. Everybody was there. Everybody was involved in at least one group, either a larger group or solo or both or whatever. And all of them got ones or twos ratings. So that was a, a great accomplishment for them. Middle school contest was just last weekend, weekend before, I should say, before Easter. And again, all ones and twos, kids all worked hard. Judges were very impressed with the kids. Lots of parents in attendance, which is great to see again. March band had a good year. We recognized for our musical schools month activities, which if you've paid attention, we had a lot of concerts in March. So in between the different activities going on, lots of concerts going on, some March Madness, not just because basketball. So we had about five performances as well. Drum line color guard performed at games. We've had last year, community memorial day services, the band students performed at that. Everybody been in contact with the people from both communities this year. Again, already getting that ready to go. High school band went to San Antonio last June. We also played at Bill's Summertime Parade. We had the middle school drum line do that since we just got back from the trip. So hoping to have another group representing the school and the band program in the summertime parade. Band boosters, choir boosters, very active, continue to thrive and do great things and help our programs a lot, so. Those are just a few of the things. There's a lot of other things. We got upcoming events here, you can kinda see that too. I won't go through all those. But the next three, four weeks, we've got basically a performance or two each week coming up here. So our March Madness continues in April. So yeah, and that's going on. And that's, that's basically what's kinda coming up now. We've worked hard doing some of our literacy stuff. We don't really follow that as much in our department, but I still do close reads with my groups. I don't know that all of our, rest of our staff has been trained in close reads and that kinda stuff, but they still do their, you know, professional development plan. All those things are implemented in their classrooms and we certainly carry through those things. So yeah, and the cleanup day was great today. Had lots of stuff going. We took two big trailer full to the dome for my, my group anyway. Had to go home and shower quick to get back. We were trying to do this, I'm sorry. Yeah, all good. So any questions on anything we've been doing this year? Kids have worked hard. It's been a good year.
Lots of good things going on. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And student presentation from the CAPS project.
Brianna and Eric here are both here, so I will let them speak about what they've worked on for their CAPS project.
I'm not sure.
I do. Okay.
You see the paper?
Okay, I can get it. Okay, I can get it uh.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Oh my God, that's such a funny order.
There you go.
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll just request it on access. So can I go up on this one? Does that work?
It's high school IT TV card one.
You guys want to control your own footbore?
Okay, thank you so much. Well, I'm not sure if you guys know this, but I'm Brianna Saylor.
I'm Eric Rosenberg.
And um this is just kind of a summary or an overview of our CAPS project.
So this all began basically when Mrs. Ruggles actually was the one to approach us. Now, as some of you may know, Mrs. Ruggles has taken it upon herself to um slowly start up the closet that we have here at SO, which basically is uh or part of it is how she distributes different feminine hygiene products in our different bathrooms from fifth to twelfth grade. And um these are donations taken in by our community as well as by herself too. Um, so she approached both Brianna and I just because she knows that we've been groomed to do a lot of public speaking through mar- um CAPS. And as she was telling us this, we realized that it was a very dire need, especially in our community, for these hygiene products. However, there is also a huge number of people who aren't having complete access to these products as well. Um, so with the help of Mr. Zoo, we were able to compile um quite a bit of numbers up, I'd say, from the different districts as well as people who had um needed um lunch assistance?
Yep, free and reduced.
Free and reduced lunch assistance, thank you. Um, and so we took numbers from that. And then Mrs. Ruggles had also taken account into looking into the different absences and then um who was all here, taking it from last year to this year. Not saying it's complete, but it definitely has been a factor in helping our attendances. Um, I'd say it also took into a factor of also our costs when it comes to um menstrual products and then our toilet and paper. So again, we had to ask Greg Greenfield, and then he explained the different financial situation with that, and we realized that it really wasn't too big of a difference for it, which was great to hear.
And we compiled a bunch of statistics um following, like we researched a ton for like the weeks leading up to it, and we made a handout. These are just a couple pages from the handout, but it was about a twelve to thirteen page handout that we ended up giving to the legislators on our day at the helm.
So Brianna and I woke up super early in the morning with Mrs. Ruggles is there warming the car up. We love that. Um, so we started our journey at from four o'clock in the morning and we continued all the way through with a little pit stop to Duncan. Um, and once we got there, Brianna, Mrs. Ruggles and I were bright eyed, bright eyed and bushy tailed. And um right away, we met with um Senator Lynn Evans, correct me if I'm wrong, Brianna. And he actually gave us a list of a bunch of different house reps that we were supposed to meet with along with different senators. Um, and then Lynn Evans' wife, Midge, actually took it upon herself to give us a little tour of everything. We even got to go to the tippy top, which most people do not get to do, um so that was pretty neat. Um, and then she got to tell us some of the history about it too. We got to learn about the different jobs that everyone has as well, which was quite fascinating because you would never think of all these different things that they have to do in that crazy building. Um, and so from there, we actually got to meet with, going down the list, people like uh Representative Deacon. And they all took lo- um loads of time to listen to us and they really did pay attention to what they were we were saying. Um, and they had questions for us too that that's how we knew that they really wanted to hear us.
Yeah. Um, then we, after lunch, at lunch, we had a call with the Northwest Review, which is the paper in front of you. Um, we had a call with her over lunch and kind of talks about what we were doing and why we were doing it. And after that, we found out that that guy right there, that is Skylar Wheeler, he is the Chair of Education. And the bill, which was previously House File five four three, which is now known as House File eight eight three, was sitting on his desk. So he was a very important one to talk to and try and convince that we needed this. He asked a lot of questions and he it was actually during debates, so he was running back and forth, back and forth to him. Felt a little bad, but um he ended up listening and the bill ended up moving from his desk to a great subcommittee right after we talked to him, so we like to think we had a little part in that. Um, then we got to talk to Sibley Sibley alumni, John Wills, and uh along with the writer of the House File five four three, eight four, eight eight three now, um David Young. He was previously congressman, he is now a representative, and he was the writer of the bill that was introduced that day that we were there. So we got to talk to him. We got pictures with him, we talked to him and his clerk, and we kind of, I am still in contact with uh David Young following that, just kind of figuring out what we need to do. And it was a great experience, super fun. He was a great guy. Now, the aftermath. Um, we gave our research over to a nonprofit, Love for Red. They've been working on trying to get feminine hygiene products provided in all Iowans high schools and middle schools for the past four years. So we gave them the rights over to our um statistics, our handouts, Project On Period is now part of Love for Red. Um, this is due to the fact that um my internship with Miss Ruggles and our senior semester is coming to an end, and we don't want to see all that great work that we did go to waste, and they reached out and asked if we would collaborate. So it was a great opportunity and it was really fun, so I am still contacting Senator Lynn and all that, trying to get it moved because the bill, House File eight eight three, is currently in appropriations, education appropriations, and as we know, money is really hard to get around, so it's just a tough spot right now, so we're trying to keep it moving, but that's where it is, so. And that is it. Any questions?
I just have to say that we couldn't have asked for two more professionally behaved, just I was just so impressed by both of them all day long. The just, and I think it says something about CAPS program too, their public speaking skills, their professionalism, their interpersonal skills. It was just, I mean, I just stood back and said, I was just their chauffeur, just just let them go, and they and they did, they did us all really proud. And the Love for Red group said, what was you guys' secret? Because it may be stalled out in appropriations right now, but for the first time ever, the bill made it out of the Education Subcommittee um in the House. So, and it passed unanimously, which which the other senator or the representatives that had tried to get it moving forward on it. There was like two different bills introduced, but we kind of liked this one because it was simple. It just just was high school, girls' restrooms, that's all we're asking for. And um David Young was, they didn't even say two. They got Senator Evans said if they got there by nine, he would recognize them on the Senate floor. And he and he had them stand in the balcony, introduce them, and everybody stood and gave them a standing ovation, which which they deserved. And they worked hard all day long in heels, which I don't. But just a testament to good things and you guys, we're gonna miss you a lot next year. You've done a good job.
Thank you.
Great job, girls.
So the whole process going through it uh at the State House, do you think that's how it was gonna be or was there a lot?
It was definite, in my head, when I got there, I was like, these are just people from Iowa, little Iowa, the state, it's in the middle of nowhere. Um, and then getting there, you're like, wow, this is like, it's way bigger than I thought. It's so pretty. And so it wasn't at all like I thought. I thought I was gonna go in and talk to these also people from small towns who had no idea where I was from. And just kind of talk to them, sit down with them, and then move on with my day. I did not know it would get as big as what it did or get the, because even when we were at the Capitol, people would come up to us and be like, what are you doing? Like, wow, great job. And I was like, oh, so this is like, you guys don't do this.
Or we were like stopping them, like, will you want to please listen to us? Like, we thought, at least in my mind, it was gonna be something like this, where we're sitting down. And I initially thought we were gonna do a presentation, so the handout, we were just like, oh, I guess now we gotta do a handout. That's cool.
It was it wasn't at all like we had thought, and it was a lot of um improv and and hustle. It was a lot like, oh, so we're doing this now. Okay. So, yeah.
Well, I think you girls were really prepared, and I think the CAPS program, this is a great um example of what the CAPS program can do, and look at the difference you've made.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Was this your first year in the CAPS program or?
It was. So it wasn't offered to juniors at first. It was only offered to seniors, and now it's a junior senior class. So it is our first year. We've both taken it both semesters, so we're CAPS two students, which is where the internship comes in, so. Yep, it's great. If I had if I had been able to, I would have taken it my junior year.
Very good, for sure, for sure.
So, yeah.
Good job. Way to represent us.
Thanks, thank you guys. Thank you guys so much. We appreciate you having us.
Nice job.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Two minute fourth policy.
So when you get a chance, you want to exit out, Mr. Hertz?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Multiple things here. All right, um knowing we had a lot of other stuff, I didn't put a lot on here, but we're gonna start the new business portion in a section in a second here in the next section. And I wanted to point out when we're talking about bonds, the difference between revenue, which is what we're financing, or general obligation. You might hear them called GO or debt bonds. And the big difference is um we don't increase necessarily our levy rate and we don't have to go to the voters for approval for revenue bonds. We're borrowing against future revenue, which comes in through um the safe of the the penny sales tax, for lack of a better word. Where the general obligation, you go to your voters for approval, and then they approve increasing your levy by X amount of dollars to pay that off. And so, yeah, we might have less overall capacity to do that, but that is a big difference. And there's some minor differences when we're going through the bond sale for that as well. So for you guys as well, as we start moving forward, people hear that, you know, we're selling bonds to facilitate the um construction and the remodeling that are going on this summer. Remember, we sold it through revenue bonds and not the general obligation or debt bonds or GO bonds, kind of here three all terms. So um just kind of being aware of the differences there, and that's important if people come up and ask that question, so that's my two minutes.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move ahead to um new business, consider approval of FFA junior senior trip.
I will try to make this as short as possible. I don't know if it's gonna be two minutes like his was. So this is our, oh, wait for it, yes, all the way in there.
I hit the right button.
This is our twenty twenty-five junior senior trip FFA trip proposal presented to you guys by me. Um, the purpose of the FFA junior slash senior trip is to develop further education in the following areas. Here, yeah, that might be easier. Meeting with leaders in agricultural and government areas. While on our tour of the nation's capital, we'll be meeting with governmental leaders and experts in the industry such as the White House we visit, and then we visit the American Farm Bureau and other farm and governmental agencies. Um, visiting the American Farm Bureau, I know that they go in and they talk to, I don't know, I think it changes, but they always go and have a really nice meeting there. We've stopped there for a national convention too. It's very beneficial. Um, we also meet with Southeastern Agriculture. We go and visit farm operations. So by viewing farm operations in Florida and Kentucky, we will further our development and understanding of the different types of agriculture in various parts of the country. Obviously, what they grow down there is not what we grow up here, so it's very interesting. And then our trip will develop personal qualities in cooperation, friendships, and the development and execution of a plan. The requirements to go to this trip have changed, so we still have to sell at least fifteen boxes of fruit each year, work early at the FFA lunch stand, be in good standing with the school, remain active and help with major FFA activities. What's really changed is the FFA lunch stand, um shifts have changed just a little bit, and that's what makes it a little bit different, but otherwise it's basically the same. Additional requirements are no outstanding bills, all payments are to be made in advance. You have to sign and turn in all parent permission slips, agree to abide by all the trip rules, and then you post a five hundred dollar trip bond to be cashed only if a member does not abide by the rules. Expenses, the costs involved of travel and lodging will be the responsibility of the Civil O Chief and FFA chapter. And then the Civil O Chief and FFA chapter will also cover the costs associated with most tour groups or group tours. All FFA members are required to put money into a fund before the trip starts. This will be used to defray the cost of all transportation. And then FFA members will pay for the cost of their meals, any souvenirs, cleaning of clothing, and then any other personal expenses that may arise. Schedule for the trip is June seventeenth, everyone participating will meet in the Ag Shop at eight AM, where they'll have their luggage checked before loading the bus, and then they will leave for Gettysburg, Pennsylvania at nine thirty AM. They'll drive through the night. And then that's where they'll stop, at the Gettysburg National Military Park. Then they will head on to Washington DC, and they will do activities there, and they include tour of Mount Vernon, monument tour, so they go to Lincoln, Jefferson, and then the Washington Monument. Then they got tickets to the Holocaust Museum this year, which is so exciting because Laura said they don't always get that, so it's very great when they do. And then Washington Monument again. And then they get to go to the White House this year, which is super exciting. And then Ford's Theater, the National Archives, the Russell Senate Office Building, and then they get a tour of the Capitol, Library of Congress, Smithsonian Institutions, and then a tour of Arlington Cemetery, the Pentagon slash nine eleven memorial. And then they will leave Washington DC June twenty-first, and they will head to Florida and drive through the night. The activities in Florida include Daytona Beach, Daytona International Speedway, Showcase of Citrus Tour. So that's the southwestern agriculture because we're not growing oranges up here. And then Universal Studios, and then they'll travel to Paris, Kentucky, which is again through the night, June twenty-fourth, where they will tour. The Claiborne Farms, and then they will leave for home. And then this is just us, and then that's it. Any questions?
What's Claiborne Farms?
Claiborne Farms is where they actually raise a bunch of horses that make it to the Kentucky Derby. It's really interesting. So it's not like going to Churchill Downs where you can see all of them race, but you can see like where they start as little colts and little foals and stuff, so it's really cool.
How many are scheduled to?
How many are scheduled to go?
Same question.
I believe it's twenty-something. I am not going because I signed a paper saying that I would go rowing college, and I have to unfortunately go get my physicals done during that, so I will not be there, but I believe it's twenty.
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors only, yes. It might not even be that much, but. Yeah, a good number.
You're close.
Any other questions?
Looks like you have a great agenda. See some really cool things.
I'm really excited for them to go to the Holocaust Museum. I went when we were younger because we went to Washington DC and it was, it's a good museum. It's really impressive.
Perfect, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, consider approval of opening and considering seal bids by.
We have to technically vote to approve on that one.
Make a motion to approve uh FFA junior senior trip.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we think that is passed.
All right, so for our next agenda item, um Matt Gillespie here with Piper Sandler is gonna get us started and talk us through these next two items, so. Matt, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me all right?
We can. So um you're on, I'm kind of projecting you on the TV, so they're all kind of looking up and watching you up there. Unfortunately for you, you will only be able to view me, so I apologize for that in advance, but they.
That's all right.
And I and I do have that up if you need that. So yes, they do have your stuff up on the board.
Okay, so uh good afternoon, good evening, board. Um, those that haven't met me before, many thanks, Matt Gillespie and Piper Sandler in Des Moines. And we are the Fans for Pfizer. And we are the financial advisor for the school district as it comes to uh infrastructure financing. And I've worked with SIBO Cheet for about twenty-five years, actually, over lots of different administrations and boards. So I have some experience around that area of the state as well. So what you see on this uh first page, we'll go through this relatively quickly. Uh but I'll come back and let you guys ask questions, so you can take as much time as you want with questions, certainly. Um but I have had time to go through this this afternoon with Stan and Kendra, so I'm pretty confident that they understand it. Um but we'll go through it as well here with you as the board. So on this first page, what we see up in the top heading, uh we originally asked the bidders to be bidding on six million one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, although you had held a hearing for up to six point five million. So it was determined that you could probably use the full amount uh for this project. And if, if there is any extra money, uh if there's any extra money, there are other needs around the district that could be used for. So we did in fact change the final amount to six point five million. What you will see on this page though, all is relevant to the six point one three million, so the purchase price and all those numbers. Um the, this standard, of course, met with your supervisor, or superintendent and business manager about a month ago, I myself, they assigned an A plus rating to the Sales Tech Bonds, so that's a very good rating. That's about as high as really almost any school district in Iowa would get. Um the, the winning purchaser today did choose to use bond insurance, so that bond insurance company has a double rating. Um you see the bids here on this page, there were four bids that were received, whoops, sorry, uh four bids that were received. Uh the winning bid from Stifel Nicolaus. And we looked at this number that's here in the light blue or gray, it's four point three zero zero six. That is a weighted average rate, so it's weighting the longer term maturities more heavily than the shorter term maturities, since you're going to be paying the interest on the longer term for a longer period of time, obviously. But it also factors in the fee that that bidder was gonna charge, as well as if they were paying you a premium for uh taking a discount. Um but it's all wrapped into this number, so the best of all of those things is the low, lowest is the winner. So in this case, four point three zero zero six. Once we made the adjustments for the six point five million and repositioned some of the principal, uh that number ultimately became four point three zero zero zero, so not much different, uh but a little bit lower, slightly lower. Uh the other bidders you see there, Raymond James in Dallas, Robert Barrett in Milwaukee, and Key Bank in Cleveland. Uh the page after that shows the sources and uses for today's transaction. So you're issuing six point five million dollars of principal. This bidder is paying you a premium of a hundred and one thousand five sixty-eight. So together, that's six point six million dollars in, in proceeds, gross proceeds. And from that, you are paying under under discount, which is the fee that that particular bidder factored into their bid. A hundred and forty thousand seven seventy-five, which includes the insurance premium. The cost of issuance, the one oh one five twenty-five, that's a combination of all the other professional um entities that were helping along the way. So that would include your attorney, which is Alred Zuccuni here in Des Moines. Uh standard of force, the rating, Piper Sandler, the company that I work for, and United Missouri Bank, uh who, who handles a few things as well. Um a bigger number though here is the reserve fund. So when a, when a municipality, not just a school, issues revenue back debt, um it's very common for there to be required at the reserve fund. Uh it's kind of like a rainy day fund or a lockbox fund, whatever you wanna think of it. Um cities would do this if they're issuing utility revenue bonds, uh universities, if they're issuing dormitory revenue bonds. So it's very common. Um and in this case, that is required at six hundred and forty-seven one fifty. That is the district's money. You do not lose the money, but you do lose access to the money while these bonds are outstanding. So once the bonds are finally paid off, that six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars will be released to the district and then you can go spend it on whatever you need at that time. Um it, you can earn interest on it, so you can definitely invest it, and Kendra and I talked about that. So hopefully you can earn a reasonable amount of interest over the, the years. Um and the interest that you earn is money that you could spend. That would be treated just like sales tax money. Uh it, it is not money that can be transferred to the general fund or management fund or some other fund. Uh it is treated as though it's sales tax. And then the big number here, five million seven twelve, that's the net amount that's left over uh for the, the board to be able to spend on the project itself. Um we're gonna see on another page that there are some other monies in and out that get this ultimate expenditure number to a higher number. But from the bond itself, five million seven twelve. Uh there's a note at the bottom of this page, if I can go slow enough not to skip past it. Uh there's a note that shows that the bonds are callable beginning July one of twenty thirty-two. So on the next page, we see the amortization schedule or the debt repayment schedule. And you can see principal payments being made in the spring or summertime, semi-annual interest payments, that's pretty typical for most municipal bonds. Uh but that call date of twenty thirty-two is right here. So up until that time, the district can't change anything. You have to just keep making the payments as scheduled. You can't pay the bonds off early, you can't refinance the bonds, you can't change anything about them. But once you get to twenty thirty-two, if you have accumulated some sales tax surplus, possibility, uh or somebody's donated, you know, a trillion dollars to school, I guess that's a possibility. But if there's extra money sitting around, you could begin to pay the bonds off early. And you can do that anytime, thirty days notice, once you get to July one of twenty thirty-two. And you can do it at any amount uh in five thousand dollar increments. Now, you're not going to waste your time to pay out five thousand dollars probably, because it'll cost you a couple hundred dollars just to get a resolution from the attorney, et cetera. Uh but do, districts do very commonly pay these off early um with excess money. You could also refinance the bonds at that time. So if in twenty thirty-two or after that, uh interest rates are low enough that it becomes mathematically feasible to refinance this debt, no different than how you or I might refinance our house or a car loan or a student loan or what have you, um the district could refinance the bonds and save money that way as well. But until twenty thirty-two, uh everything's locked in the way that you see it. On this page, you just see uh the interest rate, the yield that the, that the investors are earning, and then the price that they're paying you. Uh we can come back to that if you have any questions about it. But most importantly, probably more interesting to you is what's happening here at the bottom. Here I just put in some examples of other sales tax bonds that have been issued over the last year to give you an idea of where the market has been. So with this, I just pulled out some examples from today, your one-year, five-year, ten-year, and fifteen-year yield. And it's the yield that we can compare one investment to another. Um unfortunately, a couple weeks ago, with Sheldon selling bonds as well as Marshalltown, um that was right when these, these uh tariffs were being announced and then taken away and then put back on. It was covering lots and lots of turmoil in the market. And interest rates were significantly higher just for that short period of time. Now, that doesn't mean they could get higher again. They could be higher tomorrow, they could be higher next week. We don't know. Any day, any week, you know, the market moves. Uh sometimes it moves up and sometimes it moves down. Uh you, you happen to sort of luck out, so to speak, uh today, because rates were back down for the most part. Uh you could see a month ago, St. Ansgard sold similar bonds. And they had fairly similar interest rates to what you had. The very short, short term was lower though, although it doesn't mean a lot. Because again, what I said earlier, you're not gonna pay that interest for long, so differences in a one-year rate aren't that significant. You look back three months ago, Labyrinth Reimbek sold. Interest rates were just across the board lower at that time. Six months ago, Williamsburg, and then a year ago, Jessup, all doing just what you're doing. Uh Williamsburg and Jessup did not have the one-year maturity, their principal, they didn't pay any principal for a few years, so that's why you don't see a rate there. Uh but of course, I think most of us know, just inherently, just from watching the news or, you know, whatever, talking to your neighbors, et cetera, that interest rates have risen. Um they're still very low overall, but they're quite a bit higher than they were a year ago, and especially higher than they were three years ago. Uh when we were just, you know, in the middle of and coming out of COVID, they were at record low levels at that point. This page here now brings kind of everything together. So this, the main part here is the amortization schedule, so you've already seen that. I'm gonna blow this up a little bit, because I really wanna look mostly at the right side of the page here. So what this is showing you, first of all, sources, so money coming in. Again, you have the six point five million dollars in bond pro, principal plus the premium. But then we estimate that you will earn approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars of interest while the bond money is just sitting in the bank. Uh you'll certainly begin to spend some of that soon, but you're not gonna spend all six million dollars of it right away. So it's gonna sit in the bank and earn some interest. Um you already have paid some of the fees out of your pocket over the last six-ish months. So you've contributed some money to pay uh site logic and some equipment that you already purchased, so that's already, those are assets, basically, money that you've already spent. And then back to the top here, you do expect, or at least you were, this doesn't have to happen, but this is what we have been planning, that you would reimburse yourself for um about a hundred and ten to twenty thousand dollars. Now, that's, I believe that that's some of these expenses, but um, you know, Kendra couldn't explain that more, so that's not true. Uh but that's money that you probably will take from the bond and then put back into your sales tax fund or couple fund, or it could even be that you borrowed money from your management under general fund, those things happen. Um again, the net amount uh here, there are the cost of the projects that was estimated to be five point seven million. Certainly, we don't know what the cost is for sure, because you won't know until you've finished it. Things do crop up. Sometimes things get a little bit more expensive, occasionally they get cheaper too, often to sometimes. But if this was all accurate, if all of these estimates and projections prove to be pretty close to true, you actually may have close to three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars extra. Don't go spending that money right now, because it's not written stone. It's an estimate. Uh but if that's true, then when this project has been completed, or of course, this project itself could get more expensive and it would be tolerable, because you have this, this extra um revenue. But if the project is completely finished, all is done and everybody loves it, uh and you still do in fact have three hundred thousand or three hundred twenty thousand, or maybe you have four hundred thousand left over, uh that money can then be spent on any legal purpose that sales tax money could be spent on. Um so you could go out and buy some buses or fix a roof, buy a boiler or use a tuck queen. You know, whatever the district might need to do with that money. Of course, you could also use it, uh make a payment on the bonds. That's no different than just using sales tax to buy a bus, it's really swapping out funds. But you could spend on some other needs. Um you won't know for sure though that that is really a surplus until you're finished. So, so again, don't, don't go spending that money quite yet. Uh and then the timeline, we're pretty close to the end here. Today, we were taking bids at one thirty. The board is meeting now, and presumably here in a moment, you will award to the lowest bidder. That's all that you do tonight is award to the lowest bidder. All of the rest of the legal documents are going to be done at that May nineteenth meeting. All of those documents will come to you pre-populated by your attorney. Uh it'll be very simple. There's a lot of papers, so Kendra might give a little bit of thrives from all the paper. But from a board standpoint, very easy. You just have to approve those things in order to get the bonds completely issued and, and completed. The money will come to you on June third. So you did actually receive some money today. That's called the good faith deposit. It's like earnest money. The, the low bidder has to wire that to you within a couple hours after the sale deadline. But the bulk of the money is gonna be wired to you on June third, so then it can be invested. At that time, you could, you know, pay those other funds back to yourselves if that's necessary. You can start to pay architects and construction costs, et cetera. And then the rest of this packet, if you have a printed copy or if you want a printed copy, is just the rating report. Uh I'm not gonna go over that. You can come back and read it if you want to. Uh but you see, this is where you see that that A plus rating was assigned. Um and then their commentary does, you know, talk about the district's project, uh some of your budget practices, et cetera. But you can come back and look at that. So what's gonna happen now, I'm gonna open it up for your questions. We could talk for twenty seconds, we could talk for twenty minutes, it doesn't matter. Uh once your questions are answered, then we will go to the next agenda item, which is the actual action. And I will lead you through that. But before we get to that, uh does anyone have questions about what happened today? What, what you see in these worksheets, the process, what will still happen here in the future, you know, how do the bonds work? Any questions that you have, uh we wanna make sure you're comfortable before we go to that, that action item.
Alright, so now's the time, if anyone has some questions specific to the financing of the project, to ask Matt as an expert.
I don't have anything.
I don't either. Very well explained, Matt.
Good, thank you.
The only thing I was in, had and ask, yeah. We'd had some concerns and emails in the last few weeks with the volatility, which Matt alluded to, with the, the bond market and just rates in general and so forth. So, I mean, would it be fair to say that we were pleasantly surprised today where they were at, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say that. I was surprised, just because I've seen it in the last couple days, because a couple other schools have done this in the last few years. But since, you know, you guys don't obviously, you know, follow the market every day, I, yes, definitely, compared to, you know, a week and a half, two weeks ago, this is a pleasant surprise. Um certainly what we'd like to see happen, that the, the rates have come back down. Of course, we'd like to see them going lower. That would be even better for everyone. Um, well, I shouldn't say for everyone, but in this situation, when you're incurring a large amount of debt, uh it's, it's better. Um but they have, they have sort of recuperated. Now, but as I said earlier, with the president doing what he's been doing, we don't know what could happen tomorrow. I mean, literally, um so this could, now years have locked in, assuming that the board approves this in a few moments, but something could change and these rates could go back up tomorrow, they could fall even lower tomorrow. We, we just don't know on any given day. So if there are any other questions, I'm gonna, will lead you through the, the next item. Uh the next item is the, the only item that's really actionable. Uh I'm gonna paraphrase the resolution, and that is acceptable for me to do. But one of the board members simply needs to so move what I say, and then another board member needs to second the motion. And then Kendra, I'll remind you, you do have to have a roll call vote that's required.
Okay.
So the resolution for you is directing the sale of six million five hundred thousand dollars of school infrastructure, sales services, and use techs revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-five, Stifel Nicolaus and Company of Birmingham, Alabama. So a board member can so move that?
So moved.
If you choose.
Is there a second?
Okay. We'll do our roll call. Okay, Laurel?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll
I'll, yeah, go ahead. Wait for a yes.
That's all that you need to do tonight. Um just one more real quick thing, as, because as I was reading the name of the firm, I'm very familiar with who they are, but I realize that you might not be. Uh sometimes we get questions from board members that want to, they're, they're kind of curious, like, is this, is this a reputable company? You know, is this company good for the money, so to speak? Well, if you think about it, it's them that has to be concerned with you, because you're the one that has to pay them back. They don't owe you money. They just have to give you the money at least between now and June, so. We do know who they are. They're a very large brokerage firm, but it's really the other way around. You know, they're, 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 they're waiting on you to pay them over the years. Um so they're more concerned with, with your credibility than you would be for them. So just in case that was kind of going through your mind. Um I'll leave it at that. If anybody has questions, if you do come up with some, if citizens ask you questions and you're not quite sure what the answer is, definitely pass those questions back to uh Stan or Kendra. We wanna make sure that anyone's questions are answered, and that could be tomorrow, but it could be next year, anytime. Um Stan and Kendra, you're gonna get some more messages from, from us and from all of us over the next couple of weeks. If you guys have questions, definitely ask them. And as I said earlier, you know, probably better to try to ask me first. I probably will know the answer. If I don't, you know, you can go back to the attorneys, but it might save you some money uh to ask me those questions. Um otherwise, congratulations, uh and good luck with your project. Have a good night tonight, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, good night.
Good night.
Then we're ready to move on to approval of twenty twenty-five graduates.
So Mr. Hertz prepared this list. They've um reviewed this. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Hertz?
Um no, forty-one graduates. Uh we're expecting in May, we have a few uh with some outstanding time of community service. That's due May first. Um and we have a few that um have required classes that are cutting it much closer than I'm comfortable with. They're maybe a little more risk tolerant than I am. So, you know, our hope is always that all forty-one on this list walk across that stage in, eh, in May. But of course, they have to meet the graduation requirements to do that, and I've spoken with every student that is cutting it close, and they're well aware of that, so um we, I don't have to enforce that, but they are aware of the policies.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this list?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that is passed. Consider approval of FY twenty-six certified budget documents.
So we didn't have any comments since the first hearing, when we presented back in March, and then there was no one here to comment on that at the second hearing, which both are required by law right now legally, um, at the beginning of this meeting. So really what it takes is, um, a motion to approve the certified budget as presented. And then we will submit that electronically. We used to have to bring it in my hand. We'll work through that, but right, and verify, but right now we can submit that electronically to Rochelle at the auditor's office. Excuse me.
Okay, is there someone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Second.
Okay. Um, roll call votes, so Laurel?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, that's passed. Moving on to set date for public hearing.
We need to have a public hearing to amend the FY twenty-five certified budget, which is this year's. And those budgets have to be, um, amended and approved by the thirty-first and turned in. And so we're proposing to do that on May nineteenth, which is our next scheduled board meeting. Um, we don't have the, the final numbers, but we're just doing that in anticipation if we're, um, over in a few categories that could potentially happen. The big reason is you got to remember, we approve our budgets pretty much four, fourteen months, fifteen months before the end of that fiscal year. A lot of things can change. One of the things with this year's budget is we approved it before the legislation with T S S even happened last year and the increased teacher minimums. So yes, we had increased revenues, but that doesn't matter on the budget, we had a, excuse me, increased expenses. And then the other reason we're looking at that is obviously because of the construction project and some of those obviously expenses and things will occur this fiscal year yet.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to set the public hearing of fiscal year twenty-five amended budget for Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five-thirty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That is passed. Consider approval of forgiving missed time for students and staff.
So we have one weather-related snow day this year for all students. We've already taken care of this with seniors um, and so forth, but I'm proposing that we forgive this for students and staff this year, specifically so that we can move forward. Every day is going to count with our timeline for the construction project. So we would not make that day up. Um, our last day would continue to be Friday, May twenty-three, and then we could get started with work on Tuesday, May twenty-seven. Monday is the Memorial Day. But we need board approval to forgive days. In terms of hours, we're, yeah, we're fine.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, forgiving missed time for students and staff as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is approved. And approval of new contracts.
So we have two new contracts to approve here, Rose Fernandez to be the fifth, sixth grade slash middle school science, um, teacher position, and then John, and I'm not quite sure how to say the last name, Pacific R, I'm going to say, for the middle school math position.
Is there a motion to approve these two people for contracts?
Make a motion to approve the new contracts as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of TLC contracts for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So we always go through when we do negotiations, approve all contracts, and I did this last year, and it, it just kind of makes sense after we've approved contracts. I've waited till the next board meeting to approve the, um, TLC contracts for the following year. Um, so once again, Katie Schroder and Barb Williamson will be our two instructional coaches. Katie in that seven-twelve, really it's fi, I, I put it on there, but she primarily serves five-twelve and Barb K-four. They do some overlap there with the five-six and some duties that they do district-wide. And then our curriculum lead teachers, as an example, Kelly presented tonight, that's why he presented for the fine arts. So the six-twelve ELA, the changes with some staff that are resigning and, and those that we have in place. So, um, Katie Schroder will be doing the six-twelve ELA, and then Jean Nag would do the elementary ELA. Um, special ed would be Amber, um, Brinkhouse, math, Carrie Krogman, science would be a change as well, and Darrell and Brenda, Brenda Tuji, um, will do that together so that we have kind of a, someone representative at the elementary, and then someone at the buildings up here. The two assured me they could get along. Um, fine arts would be Kelly, Jacob Sma, C T, Matt Vermeer, and then Mr. Weersma for social studies.
Is there a motion to approve these contracts?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is passed. Consider asking, adding high school girls assistant wrestling coach.
So with the number, if you remember, obviously, we did, um, girls' high school wrestling on our own this year, and we have the head coach. We do not have a paid assistant coach on the salary schedule, and so I'm recommended adding that, and then we can advertise for that, but we can't do that till we get to that point. But they're, just with the nature of the sport, and we've had enough girls out that there's a need for two coaches. We had some serve in that role volunteer this year, and it's not paid.
Is there a motion on this one?
Make a motion to add hi, uh, high school girls assistant wrestling coach.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And that is passed. Consider approval of payments to Site Logic.
As we've been doing the last several months, we approve the monthly payments. The difference here is these last few months, and now that we know that the, um, bond sale is, is happening, is the last few, Kendra, are we paying the full amount on the invoices, correct? Yep. Instead of a percentage, we're paying the full amount.
But once we receive the funds, we'll pay all the back part that we didn't pay, yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the payments to Site Logic.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And that is passed. First reading of board policies.
Um, to summarize, I will summarize, and then, um, Laurel, maybe you can, or Jennifer can field, correct me if you have anything to add. Ninety-nine percent of the changes here are, um, legal or policy-driven. Um, the big change is with the legislation and civil rights and Title IX changes. Anything that was representing gender identity, um, can be bullied, but it can't be, uh, a class that is discriminated against for like employment purposes and things like that. So that language was removed. There were references for employee records that used to say the board secretary, and it's adding anytime that was in there, the board secretary, or their designee to handle that. So that would mean, how we currently do that, we keep those in Kendra's office, but if someone brings those in, Chrissy Ackerman, for instance, as our administrative assistant, processes and puts them in there, it's just board policy saying that. My guess is that was happening in a district somewhere in Iowa, and someone threw a complaint that someone was processing the employee records that wasn't listed in policy. So this just covers us for that. And, um, oh, there's language to update the cell phone bill to match what's coming through. And so the recommended changes that we did for that are minor, um, but just talks about parents or guardians who need to communicate with students during instructional time may contact the school building administrative office. That's the policy we currently have in place, it just wasn't listed there, meaning, don't, you're not supposed to call or text your students during the day. Call the, call the office. And the big thing is just clarifying that you have a policy that kids aren't using their phones K- twelve during instructional time. You can have policies stricter than that, you just can't go lenient. We were already at that point. So obviously, they don't use them at all in the elementary, middle school kids can't have them out during the day. The really only kids or building that have access to that during the day are the high school students, and it's in passing periods. And this really isn't changing that, it's just the wording to strength. Would that be a fair way to put that?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
So that's the policy there. The only policy that isn't based on a regu, regulation that came from IASBO that I am proposing and the, um, policy committee was good with is with our sick leave bank, this ninth point. Um, in the past, it said it can't be used for, um, maternity leave. We're recommending, and I'll, I'll read the policy, it's here, it says here, "These days can be used for maternity leave under the following condition. The individual's personal sick days are all used up." Obviously, that's the point of a sick bank, right? Sick bank days can only be used within the individual's first six weeks of leave and cannot be used to extend six to twelve weeks. They have the right to take twelve weeks, we're just saying the sick bank would not apply to that. It would apply within the first six weeks if they don't have enough days. Individuals still have the right to take twelve weeks of leave, but that sick bank cannot be used for weeks seven to twelve. Um, this was brought up initially by the association as kind of a benefit. Um, in talking through, they realized that was, wasn't something that was negotiable, but I said I would be willing to look into, and I think I had mentioned that to you guys briefly with the finance committee, but ultimately came down to wording that with the policy committee.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Questions on any of that?
Okay, then if you will read the motion including those numbers.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies, one oh-two point, one oh-two R one, one oh-two E one, one oh-two E two, one oh-two E three, one oh-two E four, one oh-two E five, one oh-four E four, one oh-four E two, one oh-four E three, two oh-six point oh-three, three oh-two point oh-one, three oh-three point oh-two, four oh-one point oh-one, four oh-one point oh-five, four oh-two point oh-two, five oh-one point oh-eight, five oh-three point oh-nine, five oh-three point oh-nine R one, five oh-six point oh-one, six hundred, six oh-three point oh-four, six oh-five point oh-one R one, seven oh-eight, seven ten point oh-one R, seven ten point oh-one E one, seven ten point one E two, eight oh-four point oh-two, nine oh-one, and four oh-nine point oh-two R one.
Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of termination.
So I put the board policy there, we are recommending for termination Juan Hernandez as elementary custodian.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the terminating the work agreement of Juan Hernandez.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 That is passed. Next meetings.
So as we discussed a few times tonight, May nineteen is our next scheduled, and that's the, the traditional normally scheduled um, night for the May meeting on May nineteenth. And this is really weird to say, the next month is June, so it'd be June sixteen, and then July twenty-one. And right now, those are the dates it was normally scheduled on, and sometimes we've had to move that for conflict with other things, but that appears to line up with Fair and everything going else, going on, so we're proposing leaving those on those dates.
Is there any, uh, dates with, um, let me miss?
Oh, Luanne?
Luanne, yeah.
Yes, I got to work through that. I don't have finalized dates with her yet to go through. But yes, we are working.
Trying to get that back on the schedule.
Correct.
Thank you for really helping, Jamie. And talking points.
Code Red?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Very, very good project, yeah, they did.
They put a lot of work into that.
Yeah, they did.
They did.
It was a good experience for them to be able to go to the, to Des Moines and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not too many kids get that experience, so that was really cool. We can do that next article.
Their fine arts presentation by, I always like hearing that and.
And even when I work here every day, you kind of forget like how many different things they have going on.
That's a lot.
In that department. I mean, and that's what that department's for, but there's a lot going on.
That's great. Okay, that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you're adjourned. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned.
How many, how many kids are in the camps?
I thought the roster was seven this semester.